Highway 55 and Old Boys Creek with a small part portion of frontage on Ennis Road on the southwest corner there. Surrounding land uses, we have medium density residential and agricultural uses. There is a church directly across the street here on 55. This is the Cambridge subdivision to the northeast and this is the Windsor subdivision to the northwest. This property was annexed into the town limits in January and any proposed development will be served by Town of Andrews Water and Sewer. This is a screenshot from our future land use plan. The red arrow pointed here to the property in question, that dark yellow color is our medium density residential classification. FYI, medium density is typically between three and six units per acre to give you a ballpark of what we're shooting for there. The requested zoning district of a conditional R6 does typically fall within that medium density range. On page four of your staff reports, you'll notice there is a comparison, for comparison purposes, the previously submitted conditional zoning subdivision plan. The next page, on page five, you're looking at the brand new subdivision plan submitted by the applicant. I'm going to point out a couple of changes since the original submittal. It is actually on a separate eight and a half by 11 sheet colored rendering, if everyone wants to follow along. Switch over. There we go. Should look something like this. The revised subdivision plan has been reduced from 162 single family lots down to 152 lots. That's the wrong one. Can you open up my USB again? This is the actual, the first version. Go back to the folder, my USB. Scroll down there, scroll down there. Yeah, go to the USB. And then the rezoning package right there. Yeah, here we go. Okay, this should match the rendering in front of you here. Wanted to point out the differences. The main difference in this second submittal is that I believe it is 28 of these 152 lots have been enlarged to be at least 10,000 square feet or more, which is more in line with our R10 zoning district minimum lot sizes here. These are the brighter yellow color lots here on either side of the existing pond and on that northernmost corner closest to the Pope and Pope Law Firm there on Old Boys Creek and 55. You should also have a proposed conditional R6 condition sheet in front of you. You'll notice most of those conditions do match the original submittal with a couple of exceptions. Should look like this with draft written across it. Okay. I'm going to hit the highlights since we've discussed this one in the past. We know that the the main condition is there will be only single family lots developed on this parcel. 152 lots total, down from 162 with the original submittal. We know that the minimum lot size overall is 6,000 square feet, but there will be at least 28 lots greater than 10,000 square feet. We know we'll have a minimum lot width of 50 feet. The setbacks will be the typical R6 setbacks, which is five feet on the sides. We know there will be turn lanes installed on Highway 55, both left and right turn lanes. We know that there will be a northbound right turn lane installed on Ennis Road to serve the alternate access to the subdivision. We have a minimum of 19 acres of open space displayed on this rendering here. We know we're going to have 20-foot street buffers along Highway 55, Old Boys Creek Road and Ennis Road. And we know we will have sidewalk, curb and gutter both throughout the proposed streets in the subdivision as well as on the frontages of 55, Old Boys Creek Road and Ennis Road. Before we go any further, does anyone have any questions about the proposed draft conditions or the changes between this subdivision plan submittal as compared to the December planning board submittal? I mean, other than the size of the square footage, if there were any others? Correct, yes, very minimum. Comment number four, 28 lots greater than equal to the 10,000 square feet. That's the main one that changed. Comment number nine, that open space was reduced about an acre and a half to accommodate those larger lots. Those are the two changes from the original conditions draft. The feedback from the commissioners at their first public hearing was that they did want to see some larger lots in the subdivision, so the applicant has addressed those concerns. Okay. The last page of my staff report has a copy of the planning board's review criteria. The staff recommendation for the conditional R6 is again for approval with the draft conditions list in front of you. Are there any more questions for staff? We do have the applicants here tonight, if there's any questions for them. If not, there was a presentation that was submitted to staff by the applicant. If you'd like to hear their presentation first and then maybe ask follow-up questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. My name is Sarah Shirley with American Engineering and I'm here with representatives from Meritage Homes for the project. So I will keep this short and sweet. I know that you guys have seen this before, so I just wanted to give you a couple of the updates of what has changed since the last time you've seen the plan. So as Sean mentioned, we now have a mix of lot sizes and one of those new lot sizes is 10,000 square foot estate lots as per the request from council. And we've also spent time to look over the plan to address the adjacent neighbor concerns that came out as part of the city council meeting. We had our adjacent neighbor come up and I'll show you what we're proposing for that. So all of the same conditions apply. We've contacted all the various departments and we will again, if we're lucky enough to get this through rezoning this time around. So some of the site plan changes, again, we've reduced that number of total lots from 162 to 152. The biggest thing, that's the difference now, and I'm looking for the pointer down here at the corner, according to the GIS topo that we have currently, which we would get better topo graphic survey done after rezoning, is we do have a little portion of our property that looks like it drains towards the adjacent property owner. So in that, that could be very easily dealt with in terms of swales, birmingham landscaping. So we're proposing and committing to look at that at time of site plan design when we actually have realistic topo on site and we'll make sure that we are not putting any additional water onto that property or off of our property. So again, same things in place. We have environmental buffers, sidewalks, retaining the existing trees as much as they exist on site and committing to those larger lots. And again, same home, we're very proud that they're all energy efficient and meet very high criteria for that. And then we will go through and get everything very stringently reviewed and approved by the various departments with the town, the state and the county. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions if you have any. And if there are none, that's okay too. Yeah, those would be proposed walking trails and we'll make sure that those are put in the best areas too. That with the sidewalks, we have over two miles of walking trails proposed through the property. So we want to get our, help keep our people active as much as possible.
Thank you.
Well, thank you guys very much. If you think of any more questions, we'll be here.
Thank you. All right, so it's that time where we need to consider making the recommendations to the town board of commissioners. If we're looking at our standards of review. Looking at A, this proposal will place all property similarly situated in the area in the same category or inappropriate complementary categories. All that agree, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. There is convincing demonstration that all uses permitted under the proposed district classification would be in general public interest and not merely in the interest of the individual or small group. All in agreement? Unanimous? There is convincing demonstration that the character of the neighborhood will not be materially or adversely affected by any use permitted in the proposed change. All in agreement? Unanimous? The proposed change is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and sound planning practices. All in agreement? Unanimous? It has been granted, granting the rezoning request is going before the town commissioners who will have the ultimate vote. And that date will be?
April the 5th, same time, same place.
All right, we have. Yeah, because we're minus that ET. Okay, now we have a little bit more fun before us.
Do the fun stuff.
The fun stuff. So to two of us sitting here, this is very familiar. We've done this round before. Lee and I have done this round before. We have a ordinance in front of us that had been approved, what, two years ago?
That's about right, yeah.
About two years ago. And the last commissioners board meeting, there were some hiccups. I'll just call them hiccups, it's nicer. But it's back before us again to be rewritten. And to go back before them again at their April 5th meeting for a final vote to be part of the town ordinances. This has to do with well, junkyards, but Sean will go through this. There was some wording in here that some citizens didn't like. So commissioners have gone back and looked over everything with legal changes and whatnot so that we can have an applicable and legal ordinance for the town.
That's right. Before we get into the gritty details, let's talk about how we got here. Back in early 2020 is the first time we looked at this. We passed it along to the board of commissioners. If you remember, early 2020 was right when the pandemic hit us. Small businesses, big and small, were hurting. The board of commissioners decided to table that amendment for approximately one year. Okay, so pick up early 2021. We brought, we put it back on the board of commissioners' agenda. It was officially adopted June 1st of last year. Now, as adopted, it granted properties meeting the definition of a junkyard had six months to come to compliance with the new ordinance. Those letters went out to the property owners on June 8th of last year. The deadline was December 8th upon which expiration of that deadline or code enforcement officer, Mr. Hodges, met with every property owner in town that he thought might be applicable to a junkyard. That's every auto repair shop, every salvage yard, junkyard, et cetera. Any property that met that definition in the ordinances, he visited, he counted the cars, found out if they, if they were unregistered, unlicensed, if they ran and drive on their own power. Narrowed it down to two properties which met the formal ordinance definition of a junkyard. Sent them violation letters, gave them time to comply. Eventually, we came very close to getting one of the two to comply. Actually issued a fence permit to have his junk vehicle storage area screened. And then last month happens, our board of commissioners tells us to put this on hold, cease all further enforcement action until we go back and address a few of their concerns. So here we are. There's a formal process in doing so, just like any ordinance amendment. It first requires review and recommendation by the planning board before we can hold a formal public hearing again to adopt any changes to our zoning ordinance. So that's where we're at today. We need to discuss amongst ourselves, at the end of the meeting, the goal is to either have a formal recommendation, a final draft to send to the commissioners for their approval, or we can table for future discussion, invite commissioners to join us. Totally your discretion how you want to do that, to make sure it's nailed down and ready to approve this time and hopefully to enforce after we approve. That's the goal. So, I've got a bunch of paperwork in front of you. This is the working draft we're looking at. Got the box in the top left corner, tells you the difference between the existing ordinance language, the language to be removed in red and the language, and again, this is just my ideas in green. New language in green. A couple of things I want to run by you. The first three paragraphs you'll see at the top of this page are our ordinance definitions as we sit today. The three I pulled out that I think are worth looking at are the definition of junk, junked motor vehicles and junked yard. Okay, those are the, those are the three topics we got to make sure that we align ourselves with when we start messing with the ordinance here. There's a second sheet that I handed out titled NC statutes related definitions. You can see junk, junkyard and automobile graveyard highlighted on that separate sheet. The reason I printed that out for you is because I had an email correspondence with our town attorney after I found out that the state does actually define these terms in state law. And it was his recommendation that we stick to defining our definitions and our ordinance exactly the same as the statutes essentially. In other words, we do not want to contradict with Andrews definitions, the state of North Carolina's definitions for these specific terms. Now, it does not mean we cannot create our own terms with their own definitions and enforce them as such. We can certainly do that. I just wanted to start with that. In other words, because the state defines junk and junkyard, we cannot rewrite that definition to contradict the state's definition in, in my opinion, and in Dan's opinion. With that in mind.
Where, I mean, where exactly are you applying that for better clarification?
So the proposed ordinance draft, you'll notice I've redlined junk motor vehicles and junkyard.
Yep.
If we're going to rewrite the definition, we got to come up with a different term. We can't call it the same thing and define it differently, if that makes sense. Okay. At the February board workshop, there was concerns from the property owners affected, the business owners affected. They did not like that the ordinance determined their places to be junkyards. They didn't like that that language used. Okay. So we can certainly, we can certainly come up with different terminology. Friendlier sounding terminology. We, we have one idea is to call them storage yards instead of junkyards. Wanted to gauge everybody's interest on that. Of course, once you move, remove junkyard once, you got to go through the whole ordinance and redline everywhere else it appears. That's why this thing is three pages long. So, the definition of a junkyard as it sits today is any lot containing more than three unregistered and non-functional junk motor vehicles shall constitute a junkyard for the purpose of this ordinance. Now, that is the formal definition that our code enforcement officer used when sending these citations, because these two properties met that definition. Now, the question I have for you for discussion is, where do we stand on the three unregistered and non-functional vehicles? Are we comfortable with that being the threshold that triggers you into being a storage yard, let's say? And thus requiring the additional screening?
But that's not the issue. The issue is containing them and screening them. That's the issue. So do you, are you okay with the town looking crappy? Because it's not being screened? And are you okay with a particular dealer over here that has vehicles where high school children have been killed in them and their parents are driving by them because it's not screened? Are you okay with that? Those are some of the issues we have to look at. And then when you have other citizens of this town that have complied with the ordinances as they've been asked to do, shouldn't all of them that are in the same business comply?
Other than the, the business owners and property owners themselves. Yeah, certainly have you pushed back from them. Correct. Now, unregistered and non-functional is how the ordinance defines it. Your typical car repair is not going to revoke the registration while it's waiting on a part per se. Now, if it takes six months, different story. Right?
Well, I think it had something to do, I think Dan talked about that where the license plate is removed off the vehicle.
Yeah, that's the simplest way to tell.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
But I think we're talking more, and I know what you're saying, but as opposed to, you know, a salvage yard or storage yard, whatever you want to call it, is different from an automotive repair place. We're not talking about an automotive repair place because that is a different business. They, you know, soon as the parts come in, they're wanting to move that car because they're, they're getting paid on that as opposed to a towing.
But again, like, like you were saying, they get caught up in this definition because of the three-vehicle rule in the definition. Maybe so, maybe so. So this is at any, at any given time, you have more than three. Doesn't have to be the same three, any, any, any four or more.
And body shops do fall under that.
Could, yeah, they could.
Because I know the county has got very strict ordinance on this. On body shops, automobile repair shops, towing vehicle, you know, areas like Stewart's and Cheryl's. The county itself has got a very strict ordinance on that.
For screening?
For screening and for, and for containment. I mean.
So, so.
They've got to have at least, it's got to be at least in a locked area and you know, I know that there's just particulars that they have of where they, and how, you know, on the yard, how many they can have in a certain area. I mean, they're just, they're very strict on theirs.
And addressing the new ones that come in is much easier.
Well, sure, because it's brand new.
They have to meet the ordinance before they get their certificate of occupancy to open. It's the existing ones where it gets tricky. Because in theory, he could have no cars today for tomorrow, no cars the next day for the next day. And technically, if he goes back to zero, he's in compliance. So you'd have to restart the clock to comply every time. Right? So so then our code enforcement guy's over there every day taking documented what he has, what he doesn't. So we need to keep in mind the physical enforcement effort that has to go in the way we write these definitions. These are particularly the two properties you see on your timeline, the ones that never at any point complied. Always had four or more at all times during that six months. Right, never made any effort to move those cars off the property. That's why they got citations.
Right.
A lot of the other auto repair shops, Mr. Hodges knocks on the door, meets with the owner, says this one, that one, this one, got to go. He says, no problem, they'll be gone by the end of week, comes back, they're gone, cross them off the list, move to the next one. You know, it's the habitual property owners that stay in that definition.
Yeah, and you're always going to have one or two.
Right.
Well, you'll have six or seven that are very compliant, you know, just because they know, like you said, Mr. Hodges will come in and, because they don't realize it either, they're so busy within their days. What you see before you is what has been gone through along with the town attorney, what is, what is applicable to stay within the North Carolina statutes.
So, so what I've done with the redlining is I'm trying to avoid using the word junked, wrecked or junkyard.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
So instead of using junk vehicle, I've copied and pasted unregistered and non-functional over and over instead of junked to be clear what we're talking about. You know, we're not calling, we're not calling anybody's car junk, we're just saying it happens to be no license plate, not drivable. Absolutely. We can. It, the ordinance got abolished as it was written, so we're trying to get it to a point where it can be passed in the forest.
We had one.
Purely the commissioner's direction.
Yes. And there was one citizen that complained. He did not want his yard to be labeled that.
So now we're tasked with finding the happy medium.
That's right.
Yeah. Page two, I highlighted the chain link fencing language. The way we had originally adopted this ordinance amendment was that chain link fencing with slats or other supplemental materials shall not be used to meet the requirements of the screening. In other words, six-foot minimum opaque fence. Wood, vinyl, masonry, your choice, just has to be opaque, virtually not see-through. Uh, but we specifically carved out chain link fencing with slats because we know that's the cheapest options, that's what they're gonna grab as soon as we ask them to comply, right? Um, I highlighted that again, wanted to put that up for discussion one more time to make sure nothing's changed. Do we like chain link with, with supplemental screening or slats? Great point. So, so these, these businesses, um, all, all expand, all non-conforming junkyards in towns, what we call them. Non-conforming meaning the formal term for grandfather. Uh, legal non-conformity is a grandfathered use. They were grandfathered until this ordinance was adopted last June and that revoked their grandfathered status. Now, of course, at, at the time, I advised against that because of the slippery slope theory. You start picking out sections of the ordinance where you revoke grandfather statuses, uh, where do you stop? It becomes very subjective, right? So that's, that's how we got to this point. We, we picked one particular type of use in town and said, okay, you are now treated just like you were a new business moving in. Even though you might've been there for thirty-plus years, you're now gonna be treated just like a new junkyard opened up today. That's where it gets tricky. Thus the pushback.
Storage units are just, I mean, you can go down to ten. The storage unit that's down there, the newest one that put up the vinyl fencing, that is particularly why. Because they're, they're. The RVs are in there, they're, they're functional, obviously, but, you know, that was a storage yard. So they were required with fencing and they put that vinyl fencing up. And it actually works as a good security point for them, but, well, they did a very nice job doing it. They are registered vehicles, but they were considered a storage yard, thus falling into.
So they were, they were actually classified as open storage.
Right.
Different definition.
Because they were allowing RVs to be parked in there and boats and what. Yeah.
So whenever someone proposes a business or an enforcement initiative comes up, I gotta find the best definition to put your business under. That's why I use those definition lists out of the ordinance here. Um, the, the catch-all is the three-vehicle rule. We just gotta decide it, do we want that catch-all in the ordinance or not? Do we wanna raise that threshold to four cars or five cars? Triggers you as a storage yard and therefore you shall comply with the screening requirements. That's, that's what we need to, to nail down.
Well, there, there and again, then if you're gonna do that, then you better know the, the lot size. Cause the lot size is gonna play, play into that. One could have a smaller lot size than the other. Where four, four cars could look, you know, or be exactly, it could be overcrowded at that point, so, you know.
But the point is regardless of lot size, you only have to screen the area where your unregistered vehicles are. So whether that's ten acres or a quarter of an acre, you only have to build screening around those vehicles.
Yeah. So the required fenced-in area could be smaller for some, not for others.
Yeah, and it incentivizes you to, to get rid of some of those cars.
Either way, I think you're at a safe point of saying three. And then they're gonna know their lots better than we are, but at least you've given them a safe number. I think if you up that number, it'll be difficult. Very few auto, auto repair shops, and very few non-functional, because that's their lot, they're supposed to get that car out of there. Get it repaired, get it out of there, because they're not gonna get paid. You're gonna, even on a lot of them that, they could tell you that, you know, a lien is been put on, might get stored at like Cheryl's or someplace else, you know, if you don't have the, the room.
Yeah.
You know, or the capacity to, to put it in there. But.
Yeah, once you, once you get the rant, I think that what I heard was a lien, a very likely problem.
It did, it depends. It depends. The lien, it all depends on the, actually the dollar value. What to put the lien on the car for, the dollar.
So.
It's gonna be futuristic, however you look at it, regardless of what timeline you put on it is, you know, we can't look at today, we can't look at next week, but we gotta look down the road, we gotta look at what we've got currently. And we, and what has already occurred currently. Yeah, you know, we've got new developments coming in and whatever, and, you know, we gotta, we gotta make sure our town is, is up and running and in compliance with all its needs.
Three more is the first thing I want a consensus on.
I'm good with this. Three is fine, Mr. A, all in favor? Yeah. All in favor for the three? Okay, we've got five.
Consensus, okay.
One. One no, you didn't get it, one. Yeah. Right? Exactly. Right?
You would think, yeah. Next thing we need consensus on. The original ordinance had six months after notification by the code enforcement officer. We gotta re, we, we gotta reestablish the timeline once this thing gets re-adopted. Again, remember they had, since early 2020, they knew we were trying to pass it tabled a year. Had six months between June and December of 2021. Now it's March of 2022. From date of adoption, which could be as early as April, could be later. What timeframe are we given? Sixty days? I, I don't think that the timeframe has proven to be not helpful. The businesses. And they've already straight up told us they're not gonna comply, so. We know where they stand, it's a matter of do we wanna enforce it or not? Right?
Right.
Right. I think that's a fair amount of time to order some fence materials, hire a contractor. And of course, uh, Mr. Hodges is very good, if you can provide a proof that you're moving forward, we can extend the deadline a couple of days at a time and check up and visit daily and make sure this progress is being made. We always try our best to, to work with our property owners where we can.
So all in favor of sixty days?
Everybody okay with this?
So we're all in good, yep, yes.
And then the chain link fence with slats. I need a consensus on that. Are we leaving it in just as it says, which basically means you cannot use chain link with slats to meet the screening requirements? Or we can allow, if we take that last sentence out, as long as chain link with supplemental screening is opaque, meaning.
Can't really see through it.
Can't really see through it. Then it would meet the definition if it's six feet tall.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Of course, I'm not evaluating material types. Not evaluating what type of supplemental screening is laid on top of the material type. It's a little bit open-ended. That's why we specifically exempted, you can't use this to meet the definition. Absolutely. It worked, it worked excellent for the junk, or the, uh, the dumpster screening stuff.
Yeah.
Cause I was the first thing they asked on the phone call, can I use chain link?
Yep.
No, specifically does not allow chain link. Okay, I'm using wood. That's how that usually goes. Right. Cause that's, that's all they'll use if you let them.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Correct. So that's what he's, he's asking, we're good with it staying in there?
Okay. Sounds like a consensus, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, so we had a consensus, anybody?
Okay, so overview of where we stand with the amendment. Number one, we're trying our best to remove all mention of junked junk motor vehicle or junkyard wherever possible without contradicting the state statutes being the goal. And of course, our attorney will look over this amendment himself. Number two, we're adopting a revised timeframe for compliance down to sixty days.
Question? Uh, section four, point nine, point three is also, the six months is highlighted there, are we also going sixty days with that as well?
Yes, they need to match.
Okay.
They need to match, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to double.
Good question, good question. Sixty days compliance, removing junked terminology. We are still not allowing chain link with supplemental screening to, uh, to be used to comply with the opaque requirement. Is there anything else we need to talk about related to junkyards before we make a recommendation here? I think everybody kinda understands, we know exactly which properties we're talking about. They've been fined in the past, we've had dozens of meetings with the business owners and property owners. They've expressed their concerns to commissioners, we know where they stand, and they've made that very clear that they do not intend to comply. Full disclosure. So, it will be a matter of following the procedures in the ordinance to incentivize compliance. Fun stuff, right? Everybody does understand that this is not targeting properties.
Right.
This is any property in town that so happens to have four or more unregistered and non-functional vehicles at any point in time.
Three.
It says more than three.
Oh.
That's how it reads.
Three or more.
Three or more?
Yeah.
Was that everybody's intention when they said that?
Three or more.
Okay.
Three, three is your, your starting number.
Yeah, it's more than three.
No, I'm at this, at the starting point of three.
Okay.
Three being, three being the starting point. That's your target.
Three or.
A lot of better words, I mean, that's, that's where you're gonna start.
And, and of course, when the commissioners get it, they can tweak it.
That's exactly right.
Make their final decision.
Right.
Okay.
They could be changing anything that we're doing, we're just making recommendations to them.
So any property with three or more vehicles at any point can, can come on Mr. Hodges's radar. And he will investigate and find out if you meet this definition and send you a formal letter, just like any auto repair shop slash salvage yard slash hobby with a bunch in their backyard.
Right.
I know you love cars.
We're limiting that too then.
That's the way, that's the way it's been, we didn't.
Yeah.
We're, we're doing three or more is my understanding, right? So the third one's gonna trigger the letter? You're right, you're right, it was more than three. It was more than three when we walked in here tonight. I recommend you would go three or more.
All in favor of it being?
Just give me the number, I'll figure out the language, just. Is the third car the trigger or is the fourth car the trigger? To leave it as is, fourth being the trigger. So do we need to do a show of hands for four versus three? Okay. You wanna vote, the six of you, four or three? You wanna vote? The six of you to decide which way the recommendation's gonna show? Again, they can tweak it.
I know.
They can tweak it. Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna go with what I know.
Cause you didn't understand what you were voting on before, and that's where we got to here. He left, holding your head again. You left, you're holding your head again.
I'm all right, leaving it, I mean, whatever vote we had before.
That's leaving it as is, yeah. See, three heads nod. Does that mean a split?
Okay, all in favor of leaving it as it is re, re, how it is, one more time?
More than three.
More, so there's no trigger. It's, okay, so four would be the trigger. Everyone in favor of four being the trigger, raise your hands. Those can't, it.
Okay, that's what the recommendation will say. Anything else?
Hope not.
I was hope not, okay. No, sir, I guess we are good to go.
Okay, um, I'm going to add this to the April 5th board of commissioners' agenda as revised, based on our discussion. Correct? Yep. Yep. It'll go to the April 5th public hearing, um, at which point the board could decide to take action or kick it back to us or table it, or make their own changes. So.